Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you again for attending tonight's Town of Beekman zoning board of appeals meeting. We have two items on our agenda this evening. The first one, at Seventeen Bow Lane. It's a continuation of the seeking of an area variance for detached garage at grid number 6659-00-461851, Zone R90. The applicant is seeking an area variance, Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B of the town code, which requires a front yard setback of seventy-five feet. The applicant has proposed forty-two and a half feet and is requesting a variance for the remaining thirty-two and a half feet. Second item on our agenda this evening, Eleven Lindsay Lane, seeking an area variance, Quigley Pool House, grid number 6759-00-990432, Zone R45. The applicant seeking an area variance, Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B of the town code, which requires a minimum rear yard setback of thirty-five feet. The applicant has proposed four feet six inches and is requesting a variance for the remaining thirty feet six inches. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to review and approve the minutes from July's meeting.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion to open tonight's meeting.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So tonight's first applicant, Seventeen Bow Lane, if you can please come up to the podium, state your names and your case for the board, which is a continuation of the hearing from last month.
Good evening. My name is Jason Lichwick of JL Architecture. Yes, we were here last month and we addressed the, we had a few items come up during the meeting and we addressed them. I know our submission was a little late, but we spoke with Jessica and Alitha. Nothing was really needed to be amended on the application. Basically, all we had to do was show the location of the septic system on the site plan. So, in that, we added, we located the septic system on the plans, which is directly tied to where the building is. We're close, five feet away from that septic system. And we determined that location, we do have the original subdivision approval, that's border code approved, and try to show the location of the septic and we go on it, and it is border code approved. So that's what we went by, we did a overlay, and that's what we placed it. Once we did that, we did realize the garage was a little too close, so we moved it up a little bit, and by doing that, we actually were able to move it in four more feet, so we reduced the variance that we were asking for. The other item that came up was this twenty-five percent of the principal, the accessory structure can't be more than twenty-five percent of the principal bulk area. So we went out and we measured up the existing house. I know last time when we spoke, parcel access has it listed as nineteen ninety-eight, but that is the living space. The house actually has a three-season room built into it, and if you include the garage area that is part of the mass structure, we come up with twenty-nine sixty-five. So we're at nineteen percent. We reduced the amount of variance that we're looking for, we located the septic system, and we're able to, you know, meet that, prove that we're below that twenty-five percent.
And if you could, Jason, if you could go through 155-26 for the, subsection one for the board, each and every element of a detached accessory structure over a hundred and twenty square feet.
So for the building permit, we have applied already for the permit. The one item that we do, so setbacks, we're in, we're within the, we're twelve feet away from the ten feet that's required, so we're, we meet that. The one issue C, it says shall be located no closer to the street than the front of the principal structure. Because it's a corner lot, as you can see, it's really tough to have anything even proposed without being closer than what the main houses, because the main house is seventy-five feet away from the road. So there's no way you can imagine that the driveway will be rotted and back. That's where we're going to run into an issue across the move to the septic line. So it's kind of locked into, this is really the only place we can propose the location of the garage. Note letter D, it's in respect and scale of the principal structure, does not exceed the twenty-five percent in bulk area, and the height of the structure does not exceed the principal structure either. And I think that's everything, because F is talking about the corner lots, which we have. The setback from the side of the street shall be the same for the accessory building as a principal structure, and that's what we're basing our variance on, seventy-five feet.
And if you could just bring the board, I know this is a continuation hearing, but I think one of the members was not here the last time. If you could just summarize the five criteria, again, for the board and for the record, and then I'll, I'll give them a legal instruction regarding their determination. If you could bring them through the five criteria, okay, that they're considering, just summarize it again, the record again.
The five criteria, what we just went through?
No, the five criteria.
The desirable change in the neighborhood, the result be produced without a variance.
Got you.
We have some additional members here tonight that were not here last month. So to bring everybody up to speed, we'd appreciate the five questions that are that are presented to you.
So the first question, will the, will undesirable change be produced in character of the neighborhood or detriment to nearby properties be created by granting a variance? Last time we spoke about that it wouldn't be a detriment to the character, one, because it's in scale with the neighborhood, plus along this road, there is a tree line that would be blocking the view of the garage. So even though it's within that setback limit, the view from the street is going to be blocked because it does sit up on a hill and there is a tree line. So it's going to be, there's a natural buffer already in place. Two, can a desired result be achieved by some other means in granting a variance? No, because of the, we just talked about the seventy-five feet that would put the garage in the middle of the yard, and it would also interfere with the septic system. Is the variance substantial? Yes, it is. Because seventy-five feet, you know, we have two, we're a corner lot, so, you know, unfortunately, we have to meet, the both front yards are seventy-five feet, and most of this property is happening towards the rear care, which is quite, you know, the distance from the road. Four, will the variance have an adverse effect or impact on the physical or environmental conditions of the neighborhood or district? No, the garage has been designed to match the character of the existing house. So it's going to match the siding, the windows, you know, just a twenty-four by twenty-four, two-car garage, nothing, nothing crazy. Is the alleged hardship self-created? Yes and no. I, I put no because it's a result of being a corner lot. And, and it kind of limits us to where we can actually put any kind of accessory building on that lot. And I figured we've, we've kind of picked the best location because of the natural screening and the buffers, all that's already there. And those trees will remain, they're not going to be cut down.
There, there, your, the subdivision is from what year? Was this lot approved?
Nineteen, nineteen fifty-seven. Nineteen sixty-three.
Okay, and can you just summarize why the proposed structure is not, is it feasible to bring it closer to the principal structure?
We would love to, but unfortunately, we have an existing shed that is sitting on a foundation in between the house and where we're proposing, and there's not enough room between the shed and the house because we have to meet that ten-foot distance from the principal structure to an accessory structure.
Is there a topographical issue over there?
No.
And, I'm sorry, can you, can you share with the board why that existing shed poses a problem?
Why the shed poses?
Is it, is it immobile, is it?
No, it's sitting on a foundation. So you can't just pick it up, it's not like a quarter of a shed where you just pick it up and move it to another location without having the, the foundation left behind.
How, how big is it, the shed?
I think it's eight by ten.
I mean, they, they build skyscrapers on top of skyscrapers in New York City. An eight by ten shed doesn't seem to be a huge problem, unless I'm missing something.
No, he uses the shed for storage as well.
Why don't we go around the room with each member if they have any questions?
Linda? Stella?
No, I'm good.
Well, thanks for all the late work you did getting the correct measurements and figuring that out. I think we've about got everything answered I had from last month, so I think I'm good. It's up to you.
Yeah, I guess the one remaining item that did come up, given the location of the proposed garage and given that this, the existing, the primary residence is, the principal structure, excuse me, is on a corner lot, there's two interpretations of where the front yard is, right? The first one being a, you take the midpoint of the existing home and you draw a straight line to the road, that's one. If you take the midpoint of your drawing and you draw a straight line to Bow Lane, the proposed garage will be in the way. And there's a section of the town code which addresses that. So there would potentially need to be a variance for that. What we need to do is go to the zoning administrator for interpretation of that code.
Yeah, that code is, for the record, it's 155-26C as in Charlie, which is before you, you have the code in front of you?
Yep.
I, I can instruct the board to do one of two things. They can consider the variance before it and condition the variance on a positive determination from the zoning administrator as to whether or not one Charlie is, a variance is required under one Charlie. If she determines along the lines of your interpretation, then you wouldn't need to come back here. But you would not be able to get a building permit until the zoning administrator makes a determination. So the condition, it would be a conditional approval. Now, the board, the other choice that the board has is they can consider both of them next month. It's up to you.
So let me just state, so having two roads, a corner lot, two different roads, pretty much means you have two fronts to the house.
Yes.
Right, and because of the, the way the building is, you can't have anything closer to the road than the primary structure. So you're in a quandary because you have two sides that are actually considered front, and the, the ability to put it behind the house isn't an option. Or actually, behind is kind of irrelevant, the way you're stuck in there. So if I'm interpreting that right, that's the whole deal, right Craig?
Yeah, I, I think that it's in line with the, the existing driveway. So it makes sense. I, I do have, I need a clarification though for the board with respect to the setback. Because the setback that you're, that you're seeking a variance on is the seventy-five foot setback. But what is the distance from the corner of the proposed garage to, on a ninety-degree angle to Bow Road from that corner?
That's thirty-four seven on the corner of the garage to the edge of the road. And it was sixteen eleven to approximately. And it needed to be.
So it, it needs to be seventy-five, so the variance is forty feet. Forty, forty feet, five inches.
Which reduced from last time.
Forty feet, because it's seventy-five minus thirty-four, seven.
He's got thirty-four, right? Thirty-four, seven?
Right, and seventy-five are required, so it's a forty-foot, five-inch variance, so we have that in the record.
And that's another quandary because the code says that accessory structure on a corner lot has to be the same distance back as the primary structure.
Yes, but you, this is just one of five factors, so it's not a defeating factor, but it is a factor that you have to look at on the overall scheme. Okay, it does not have to perfectly match all five.
Absolutely.
So, Mr. Chairperson, what is the board's pleasure? Would you like to condition it, or would you like to? In, in either event, I think that you should have a continuation date for next month regardless, just in case the zoning administrator comes back and says that they'll need a variance.
Question, wouldn't that be considered under the same variance because we're looking for the setback?
No, it's not, because it's under a different section. It's one C. You're seeking a variance under one F.
For the setback.
Setback, which is a number of feet. One C says it should not, not be located no closer to the street than the front of the principal structure. So this, so the zoning administrator is going to have to make a determination as to that variance.
Is that Alitha?
No, that is Jessica Peterson.
Oh, okay, Jessica.
If, again, if she comes back and says, you know, no variance is needed for that, we need a letter to that effect for the board, for your file.
In that, in that case, could we request a conditional approval based on Jessica's review?
Yes, because we wouldn't have to come back for the public hearing.
Yeah, because we, we had the conversation with Jessica before this, and because the zoning, the setback was so significant, she didn't want to make the determination. She felt it was more, you know, up to you guys to come in front of you.
And she may very well, but we, we can't speak for her at this moment in time. So, so, yeah. If she, you know, we, we want it to be part of the record, so you guys are, you know, in your, in the best light possible. But if she doesn't, you know, I, I, all I can say is we should have an adjournment of the public hearing to next month for a worst-case scenario, so that it's on the record that the public hearing is continued, it's conditionally continued. And if there's no need for that, it will be reflected on the, on the website.
So the conditional, so the adjournment of the public hearing, if needed, will be until, at September seventh. The board will vote for a conditional approval of the variance that you're seeking this evening. And then again, pursuant to conversations with the Town of Beekman individuals, Jessica and the, and the building department, and if needed to come back on September seventh, we'll, we'll do that.
But if she provides a letter, we don't have to come back?
Yeah, we're going to, we're going to set the hearing for the September seventh just in case, but if she okay's everything and you don't need to come back, it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and not have it, so that way we're not repeating what happened this week with late submissions. Yeah, yeah. Does that make sense?
Yep. Now Craig, is that two different approvals we're going to be doing, or we do all?
Well, you're, you're, you're going to make a motion to keep the public hearing open for the, in, in case a variance is needed under subsection C. One C, so 155-26A1C. We need the zoning administrator's determination on that. The, the variance before you that is now ripe for determination is the 155-26A1F, which is a forty-foot, five-inch variance. So if you want to go through the five criteria based on the record, at this time, you may do so.
Yeah, yeah, so, so the undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by granting a variance?
You have to make sure you, it can be heard on the record, so. Just talk into the microphone if you can.
Can the desired result be achieved by some other means other than granting a variance? Right?
With that particular position in that corner lot, I don't believe so.
Question number three, is the variance substantial? I, I believe it is. Yeah, I believe it is. Will the variance have an adverse effect on the impact of the, on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
Yeah, I don't believe so.
No?
Especially if they're going to keep the trees.
And then finally, is the hardship self-created?
No.
It's based on the lay of the layout.
Yeah, they're in between two, two roads that kind of puts them in a little bit.
The house that was built in nineteen sixty-three, there is no way to.
Mr. Chairperson, I would just suggest that when you consider condition number three about the substantiality of the variance, it's self-admitted substantial, but there's no other place topographically to put this particular structure, so the board may consider that.
Agreed.
There's been testimony to that effect, I should say.
So at this time, I'd like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open pursuant to the zoning administrator's interpretation of, of the code.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
At this time, I'd like to make a motion to grant or deny the applicant's request for the variance that's before us now, which is for grid 6659-00-461851, seeking an area variance from Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B of the town code, which requires a front yard setback of seventy-five feet. The applicant has proposed forty-two and a half feet and is requesting a variance for the remaining thirty-two and a half feet.
No, that is, forty, forty feet, five inches is the.
Forty feet, five inches. Thank you.
Second.
Second. Okay.
Okay, roll call.
Linda?
Aye. Join four.
To Grant?
To Grant.
Yep.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye here. Okay, the ayes have it.
Gentlemen, thank you very much for your time and your late work. Sorry to have to bring you back. Yes, so you're, you'll be in touch with Jessica?
Yes, I'll reach out to her tomorrow.
Very good.
Town hall's closed tomorrow, so Monday.
Monday.
Monday, yeah.
Thank you, guys. Let's move on. Item number two this evening, Eleven Lindsay Lane, seeking an area variance with Quigley Pool House, grid number 6759-00-990432, Zone R45. The applicant is seeking an area variance from Section 155, Attachment 2, Schedule B of the town code, which requires a minimum rear setback of thirty-five feet. The applicant has proposed four feet six inches and is requesting a variance for the remaining thirty feet six inches. And the applicant is at the podium.
Hello, my name is Joanne Quigley, and I'm at Eleven Lindsay Lane, I'm the owner. We are seeking a variance for a structure to be built on our property. It's a pool house, it'll be a structure that will be right next to our pool. We were granting variance for our pool, it was built three years ago. The only issue that I see with the information that you have is that I'm not requesting variance for four feet off the property line. The setback is measured by feet, the structure would be seventeen feet off the property line, so requesting variance of eighteen feet.
It's measured by the closest part of the structure to the rear, so it's actually a thirty-one foot variance.
The closest part of the structure off the property line would be seventeen feet.
Can you put that map up?
Can I ask you to come up here for a second, just point something out on the map? I'm sorry. So from here to here, how far are we at?
It's going to be seventeen feet.
Okay. And currently, the pool, that variance was there, I kind of remember doing that pool a couple of years back, the variance for that. Okay, and the pool is how far off that, that back line? Do you remember?
It's, I'm going to say it's about twenty feet off the back line.
It's seventeen, and the required is?
Thirty.
Yeah, they got a measurement of four, six, and I'm just trying to figure out what that measurement is, the four, six.
That's what I saw.
Is that, is there a roof line that's overhanging by a lot for some reason?
I mean, you can see on the plan. Understood.
Yeah, that's all, you know. And I hope that 4.6 really throws us.
You want to take that for a second?
You know what? We used Zillow the last time, and they've fit us a bug.
And it messed us up.
They messed you up?
I think at this point, knowing that there is that issue with that measurement, I just want to make sure that there's no other issues before.
Yeah. If you don't mind, we got other questions we want to ask, so you can be able to check all the boxes when we're done.
Appreciate it.
Yeah, it doesn't make sense to have you come back again and again.
You know what? I'm going to give you actually this section of the code that we were reading from actually on the prior application. It's the same code, 155-26.
Yeah.
It's considered a structure over 120 square feet and detached from the house.
Right.
So maybe you can go through the criteria there and address them one by one, so we can, you know...
Once you know you've hit all those, you're good.
Address any deficiencies.
Yeah.
Yes, I mean, it's, it's...
Well, you got to go before, I'm sorry to...
Yeah.
No, no, keep that and go to the microphone.
Look to the podium, yeah. Thank you.
It's certainly over 120 square feet. It's 1224.
Yeah.
That's certainly it. Will require a borough for building permit. It's not within 10 feet of operative septic tanks or leach fields, but I don't have another place in my yard to put this. I have a very, like, there's a tight spot where I can do anything without it obstructing septic, leach field, or falling within the setback.
Right.
So no closer to the street than front, no, this is behind my house. Should respect the scaling character of the principal structure, yes. Exceed 25% of the principal structure in bulk, no. Exceed the height of the principal structure, no. Fire safety purposes, yes. We're expecting it to be built within those codes. It's not a corner lot, it's a middle lot, and it's on a cul-de-sac.
Yeah. So in addition to the, the 4 foot 6 measurement, which is depicted on this map from, from the architects, one of the issues we're having is we don't know where your septic system is or where your leach is on this map, and without, without that, we can't tell whether this proposed pool house is within 10 feet of that septic system or, or the leach, so that has to be marked on the map as well.
Okay.
So we don't have enough information to make a determination tonight based on the code.
So we would have to also, Mr. Chairperson, we would also have to depict the reserve field.
Is this pool house going to happen?
Because that's in the statute. So if there could, if she could resubmit for your consideration at the next meeting, the, the actual as-built dimensions of the septic system and the septic fields that were approved by the Department of Health, it would be, it would meet the, the threshold determination issues that you need to decide, one of them. And then, of course, the new survey will depict a new setback to the rear that I believe the applicant said is at least 17 feet.
Yeah, yeah.
After that new setback is shown, it may very well help her, help her in the septic distance.
Yeah, okay. I think maybe we, do you have some, do we have any questions?
Well, I just want to, is there going to be a bathroom put in this pool house?
No, there'll be no water or septic.
I was just wondering.
It's just going to be electric. And we don't need to run electric to the area because there's already electric in the area.
Yeah.
All right. If I, if I could just ask you, would you be adverse to moving that setback to equal to what the pool is? I remember giving the variance a couple of years back on the pool, and I remember where your septic field is and the plans for that back then and how we had to get that squeezed in, it really wasn't another spot. But because it's, and we try not to give such huge variances unless there's a real need for it, and because the pool already has a certain variance, you know, I mean, this is only my personal, it's just something for thought, you know, if you would be adverse to move that farthest edge to the same variance that the pool has. Of course, you can apply however you want, I'm just saying, asking if you would be adverse to doing that.
I mean, we would certainly reconsider the size of the structure. The patio is certainly wider than the pool.
Right.
A patio not needing a variance in my understanding, so this would sort of line up with everything there. So, I mean, that's something that we would reconsider, but obviously, we would, we would like to go with our original plan.
Absolutely. Okay.
The mailings. Just want to make sure that there's a record.
Yep. Do we do the balancing or the balancing question?
We can, Craig, we can go through the balancing question.
Yeah, go through the balancing, and, you know, obviously, the roof line will, there's a fence there, and the rear neighbor, you know, should be, you should be considering that view of, with the roof line and everything.
Yes, so, a couple of things, let me just check this over to make sure. I'm sure it is. These plans.
Yeah, there it is. Little, little chart.
11, 11-9?
Yeah. 11-9.
11-9, okay. You guys have a very tall under house, so it doesn't, it definitely isn't over the principal structure for sure. But, you know, like Craig had said, you know, we have to consider the neighbor line, you know, being so close. 11-9 isn't terribly high, you know, considered a pool house, but it may be to the neighbor, so those are things we got to consider. But upcoming, you know, the new pa, map, the leach fields on there, the correct measurements for the building, and the reserve field has to be shown also?
Yes.
And the reserve field. I believe those will take care of what we need to look at to make a decision on it. We're going to ask you the balancing questions anyhow, so we can, that way if there's any other questions that are brought up, you'll have the answers.
Yeah, so will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by granting this variance?
No.
Yeah. Can the desired result be achieved by some other means other than granting a variance?
I think that we got to let the applicant answer those, so she can make the record right now as to why she needs these balancing. So why don't you start with the first question again?
Yeah. So for the applicant, will an undesirable change be produced in the character of the neighborhood or a detriment to nearby properties created by granting this variance?
No, there are similar structures in the area, various sheds and garages and things like that.
Can the desired result be achieved by some other means other than granting the variance?
No. I mean, due to the position of the house, the house itself is only 50 feet off the rear property line and where the septic is and the leach field, there really isn't another place to put it.
Is that directly behind your house?
It's not directly behind my house, it's actually off into my yard a little bit.
Okay.
Is the variance substantial?
Yeah, I guess, you know, I'm asking for 18 feet, it's 35, so it's half ready.
Will the variance have an adverse effect on the impact of, of, on the physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district?
No, I don't believe so.
And finally, is this hardship self-created?
I don't think so. Like I said, there's, there's no other place to put it, so...
Okay. Any questions from the board?
No.
I tend to be in agreement with the applicant.
Yep.
Yeah? Then at this point, I want to make a motion to keep the public hearing open and adjourn to September the 7th.
Hey, what's the submission deadline, Alitha? Do you want?
We're going to get the submission deadline in a moment. We're going to keep the hearing open so that, you know, we can give the applicant the opportunity to go through the process again for the new variance on the measurement, the septic system, and the septic location. The applicant will reapply for the 155-26 variance and will show on this map the location of the septic in, in respect to the proposed pool house. The board will also direct the applicant to go to the Dutchess County Department of Health to get their approval to build the pool house structure in the proposed location. That'll be a condition of the board's approval down the road, so it could be the most cost-effective for the owner to do that.
Well, that would be in, in the event that there's an encroachment
Yeah.
of, of, of the setback requirement, I would think.
Okay.
All right, but that, that's not before us right now, because we have no information on the septic location.
Okay.
I'm trying to get the, right now, we're trying to get the submission deadline, so hopefully, we can rule out additional variances.
She can get the, the septic location as built from the DOH?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's also, if it hasn't deviated from the subdivision map, it, it can be transposed by an engineer, you know, right onto the survey.
Yep.
So August 21st?
August 21st, 2023 would be the submission deadline.
August 20, can you, can you do that? Can you get the submission done by then, you think?
I'm trying.
So there will have to be, like, distant measurements from the pool house to your septic field and the septic system.
And the back line.
Yeah. And the back line at a right angle, 90-degree angle. Those are the two possible variances.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, again, an accurate representation of the distance from the pool house to the property line and then the location of the septic on the map. Yeah.
Fine, let's just see what...
I'm too sure that I understand. I need to do everything that I just did, right? I need to notify my neighbors, I need to...
You don't have to notify them again.
Okay.
The public hearing is, is going to continue to stay open.
Okay.
So we're going to adjourn the public hearing. I just want to make sure I gave Ms. Quigley my only copy of the statute, so...
The short answer to your question is you don't have to do that. We're going to, we're going to keep the public hearing open, you've already submitted to your neighbors and you've done the mailing, we have that on record. If you were to request something brand new, then you'd have to go through the process over again. What you're doing is amending the distance from the pool house to your property line and giving us an opportunity to see where the septic system is on, on the property map so we can make a determination. Right now, we don't have enough information to make a determination today. I think just for, you know, for, I think the path of least resistance, although it doesn't sound like it, is going to the Department of Health and, you know, getting there, okay, would be very helpful as well.
Okay.
Yeah. To build the pool house in that area, that's, because if it's 11 feet, even though you're compliant, 11 feet to a septic system, you know, can propose issues, you know, in 50, 60 years. Yeah.
Understood.
Yeah.
It would also be helpful when you're considering the statute, which is 155-26, if you could just put the square footage of your home and the square footage of the proposed structure. It's quick addition, and, you know, that will be definitive, and you'll, you'll be able to make the record better that way. This is very, very simple. Those two issues just have to be addressed and look forward to your new submission.
And that should be put on the survey itself, correct?
I would.
Okay.
Yeah, you could put it in the notes.
Okay.
Your survey could put it in the notes.
Great.
And the legend.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Oh, thank you.
We're going to make that motion.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Yeah.
Everybody vote on that?
You can keep it if you want to make a motion to keep that open until next month.
Yeah, yeah. I just wanted to make sure she was all done. Great. At this time, I'd like to make a motion to keep the public hearing open until the September 7th hearing.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great. We did that, we did that, we did that. Last and not least, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Second.
What took you so long to respond?
All in favor?
All in favor.
Aye.
All right, meeting's adjourned.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time, Joanne.
Thank you.
Sorry to bring you back again.